Good afternoon, I'm Trenice Riggs, School Board Chair, and the Administrative Informal and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at 3:30 PM on this ninth day of May, 2023. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.vbschools.com/meetings/live, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to those that have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex Einstein Lab are Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Martin, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Owens.
Thank you. We're going to go right to School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. Anybody have anything to share?
Yes, I just wanted to remind my colleagues, you get the agenda Wednesday, look over it for the awards and recognitions and the resolutions, and you have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to request something. Because what's happened is, we're getting changes Monday after it's already been sent to Regina, it's already been sent to David to put your scripts out, and then Regina's making last-minute changes without talking to all parties, so we're making changes that really shouldn't be happening. So, we're going to go back to a couple of these, because since we changed it, there was a couple that were not notified, so with Ms. Brown, you're going to read the original that you had, and Ms. Owens, you're going to read the original. If y'all want to share it or talk about it over dinner, you know, go for it, but we've got to start requesting in advance, so we're not switching around and changing on Mondays, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to remind everybody, we have three things on the workshop tonight, and we want to make sure we get all of those in, so I'm going to really remind you about that when we get discussing items. So we need to get through that, and possibly even maybe one of the closed sessions. But I do want to remind you, I'm going to really be looking at the clock today, okay? So we're going to start with Literacy Update B. Welcome Dr. Kip Rogers, our Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Lorena Kelly, Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. Annually, we provide the Board with an update on where we are with our literacy programs, particularly those in the early literacy area. So I've asked Dr. Lorena Kelly to come and share an update with the Board. So without further ado, Dr. Kelly.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. Today, as Dr. Rogers shared, I'm going to share a high-level literacy overview. I'm going to begin by sharing mid-year data, talk about the foundation of our literacy program, and then describe the alignment to the Virginia Literacy Act. In the fall, we shared student data regarding two assessments that we use to monitor student progress and drive instruction. Those assessments are listed on the slide. The pre-K Language and Literacy Screener and the Phonological Awareness Literacy Screener, or PALS, as you guys know, are implemented in the fall, mid-year, and spring. However, the PALS data in mid-year is not recorded the same way. At the beginning of the year and at the end of the year, we share the percentage of students who are identified as at-risk. At the mid-year administration, we look solely at the sub-test data for teachers to use that to drive their instruction, so they don't give us a percentage of students who are identified as at-risk. So you will not be seeing that data this afternoon. However, for the reading inventory, we do use the end-of-the-year percentage of students meeting that benchmark throughout the year, in the fall, mid-year, and in the spring. So I will be able to report that data today. So this slide shows the percent of 3 through 5 students together meeting the end-of-the-year benchmark according to the reading inventory, with the orange indicating the 22-23 school year and the blue indicating the 21-22 school year. In January, when the mid-year assessment was administered, 59.9% of our students were already meeting the end-of-the-year benchmark. As you can see, this is a little over a 10% increase from the fall administration, and just about a percentage point higher than we were last year during the mid-year assessment window. So you can see that we're on track to meet or exceed the percent of students meeting end-of-the-year benchmarks. Now, we've broken it down by grade level, so you can get a little closer look. In grade 5, this slide shows the percent of 5th graders meeting the end-of-the-year benchmark, again, in January when this test was administered. You could see that 63.3% of our 5th graders were meeting the end-of-the-year benchmark at that time, and that's just slightly lower than the percent that we had last year, and that's a 9% increase from the fall of last year. So we're still expecting to hit 70% of our 5th grade students meeting benchmark by the end of the year. This slide shows the 4th grade data, again, with the orange indicating this year and the blue indicating the previous year. You could see that we have 58.3% of our 4th graders who were meeting that end-of-the-year benchmark in January, which is an 11% increase from the fall administration, and about 2 percentage points higher than we were at this point last year. And here we are with our 3rd grade reading inventory data. You could see that at this point in January, when the 3rd graders took this assessment, we were at 58% of our 3rd graders already meeting that end-of-the-year benchmark, which is a 12% increase from the fall administration, and slightly higher than we were at this point last year. So now that you've seen all of this data, you might be wondering a little bit, what is our literacy instruction like here? So we're going to tell you a little bit about that. What we teach in Virginia Beach are the Standards of Learning, which are organized by the following strands: Communication and Multimodal Literacy, Reading, Writing, and Research. We use a structured literacy approach, which includes whole group, small group, and individual conferences. We implement instruction that is aligned to science-based reading research and evidence-based literacy instruction, which includes systemic, explicit, cumulative, and diagnostic instruction. So this slide might be a little small, but we wanted to make sure that you could see our commitment to providing instruction that is aligned to current research and best practices. Virginia Beach is always what we're facing, and we began making changes as early as 2018, and beginning in 2019, we changed curriculum and we restructured the schedules. So when you look at the screen, you can see that we do use that structured approach that includes that explicit and systemic teaching of phonemic awareness and phonics, which are the underpinnings of a proficient reader, and that we also have that explicit vocabulary instruction that's provided during both whole group and small group. Additionally, we wanted to share with you two images that demonstrate the models that really help provide context regarding how the brain learns to read and write, and that we use here to drive our work. So the first model is referred to as the Simple View of Reading. It's a multiplication equation that identifies two factors: the printed word recognition and language comprehension, which are required for the product or the outcome to be a proficient reader. Printed word recognition and language comprehension are further explained through the second model, which is Scarborough's Reading Rope. Here, we can see that the skilled reading is a result of the fluent execution of word recognition and text comprehension. The subtasks related to the development of word recognition are phonological awareness, decoding, and sight recognition. These three skills are braided together and are considered the on-ramp of reading proficiency. Language comprehension is comprised of the reading comprehension-related factors. This includes background knowledge, vocabulary, language structures, verbal reasoning, and literary knowledge. So why is all of this important? Because in 2022, the Virginia Literacy Act was passed. The goal of this act is to improve literacy outcomes for our youngest learners through the implementation of evidence-based literacy practices in all of our K-5 classrooms. The Virginia Department of Ed has provided information regarding the implementation of the Act to support divisions in meeting the requirements by 2024. So Virginia Beach City Public Schools, like I said, we have already been analyzing this and reading the most current research and making those changes. So we've been building the capacity of our educators regarding evidence-based literacy practices and have already began making adjustments to our curriculum and resources to support our teachers in planning, teaching, and assessment of these early skills. We wanted to make sure we highlighted this definition straight from the Virginia Literacy Act. They define evidence-based literacy instruction, and I wanted to make sure that we highlighted just a few words: that sequential, systemic, explicit, and cumulative teaching. You hear us say that a lot, so I wanted to make sure that you know why. It is grounded in this evidence-based literacy instruction. It's a foundation of the Virginia Literacy Act, and we ensure that it's a part of the curriculum and resources that we provide our teachers. So what does the Literacy Act require? We wanted to share a few things. It requires that instruction and intervention programs are aligned with that science-based reading research, and that the professional learning that our teachers receive is aligned to that research as well. So Virginia Department of Ed will release an approved list of resources. We are in the process of being reviewed, and we will continue to keep you up to date so that you know where we will go. With the 23-24 school year, we will continue to use our curriculum and what will happen on the 24-25 school year when we're in full implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. I know I've shared this before, that we've already been making some changes, but we wanted to highlight what some of those changes have been. Beginning in 2019, we shared "Equipped for Reading Success" by Kilpatrick, which is a book that really focuses on the phonological and phonemic awareness, and we made sure that our literacy leaders had professional learning, which then in turn, our teachers did, and this is something that was widely used in all of our buildings. In 2022, literacy leaders were all provided letters training, which is Language Essentials for the Teachers of Reading and Spelling. All of our literacy leaders have received Volume 1 training, and many of them have received Volume 2. We also have special education teachers who participated in that training. Many of our administrators have participated in our letters training, and several of you know that we've shared over the last few years, we started with a cohort of 200 teachers in schools. This year, we went up to 300 teachers in schools, so we've had over 500 Virginia Beach educators trained, and they're all embedding these evidence-based literacy practices in their instruction. And there's more. We're continuing. So we have cohorts of teachers participating in letters throughout the summer, and this is an individual cohort. So these are teachers who are volunteering and applying to go through the summer. And then we're also going to continue to have letters cohorts during the school year, where administrators work with their teachers and provide that opportunity during the year. Bless you. Additionally, I do want to highlight that in Virginia Beach, we use Virginia Beach City Public Schools facilitators for letters, and I think that's very important, because not only do we use that professional learning, but then we show the alignment to the resources that we have, so our teachers see that connectedness and the intentionality that we have in our practices. We're also providing teachers with two days of professional learning to utilize throughout the year to help with the requirements that are necessary to complete the letters program. We wanted to make sure that all of you were aware of this change that's also coming about because of the Virginia Literacy Act. You've heard of PALS for the last 20 years, with little changes being done to the PALS assessment in those 20 years. So based on the shift to those evidence-based reading practices, the Virginia Department of Ed is continuing to partner with the University of Virginia, and used to go to the PALS website, but now it's called the Virginia Literacy Partnership website, and we're going to be using a new assessment. The PALS will now be the VALS. It's the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System. And we've been doing some piloting here in Virginia Beach, some other divisions have as well, and what we're going to do is, we have the opportunity to participate in the soft launch, the 23-24 school year. The Virginia Department of Ed has provided 17 school divisions the opportunity to soft launch the pilot, and we're actually going to be providing them with input. They've made it very clear in the professional learning that they've shared up to this point that they will be having structured opportunities for teachers who are implementing in these divisions to provide information on the new subtests that are being implemented, the timing that it takes for the subtests that are being implemented, and they will not share what the final product will look like until after they receive all that feedback. But then, beginning the 24-25 school year, all divisions in Virginia will implement the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System. So we're doing it the 23-24 school year and providing feedback, and the following year, when the Virginia Literacy Act goes into full implementation, all divisions will implement that as the screener. So I just wanted to share with you why the Department of Ed is shifting to the Virginia Literacy Screener. It's because they wanted to ensure that the assessment that we're using for that diagnostic measure and throughout the year is more tightly aligned with that evidence-based research. The subtests are going to be more comprehensive and provide teachers more information to respond to the needs of the students, to better inform their instruction, and the ultimate goal is improved reading success for our students. So I know that's something that we're all dedicated to do. So coming soon, the Virginia Literacy Act is going to be implemented in the 24-25 school year, and that act is going to ensure that all students receive core literacy instruction from evidence-based curriculum. It's going to be their entire literacy block, and it's also going to ensure that all teachers are using that curriculum and have the professional learning that they need to make sure that they're doing that throughout the day for their kiddos. I know that was a lot, so I'm just going to give you a quick summary. At this point in the year, we have 59, well, actually, in January, we have 59.9% of our 3rd through 5th grade students already meeting the end-of-the-year benchmark for the reading inventory. Here in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, we are implementing evidence-based literacy instruction and providing professional learning that's aligned to science-based reading research. We're going to be implementing the new screener in the 23-24 school year, and beginning the 24-25 school year, there'll be implementation of either our curriculum updated or a new core curriculum to make sure that we're in full implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. I know I keep highlighting how wonderful Virginia Beach is, but I just wanted to do it one more time right here. So the Virginia Department of Ed has partnered with a data analytics service company to make a new data tool available to schools and divisions that look at how much growth students are making on the state standards as measured by the Standards of Learning. The system is referred to as Virginia's Visualization and Analytics Solutions, or the VIVAS, and a snippet is displayed on the screen. It uses students' individual test history to predict performance on SOLs, and then it compares their expected performance to their actual performance. So when you look at the screen and you look at this growth across the division, you can see that using the spring assessments from '22, our students demonstrated growth that was well above what was expected at every grade level in reading and writing. Yay! Okay, it's a celebration. Also, you can't do a literacy update without highlighting some amazing work that's happening in our building. So this is just a snippet from a couple students at Brookwood Elementary, where you could see in action some of the literacy instruction that's occurring there. And here is another little snippet from Thurgood Elementary, these students who are deeply engaged in literacy instruction, and I love the top picture where you could see those teachers really engaging in those practices during a collaboration that they'll then implement in their classroom with their students. And before I end, I wanted to mention that if you haven't, you will be receiving an invitation from the VB City Grow Smart team. I know earlier in the year, you received information about the Right to Read documentary and were provided with the opportunity to see the screening. The Virginia Beach City Grow Smart team will be sending invitations for a viewing on June 2nd and 3rd, and they've invited all of us, because there's complimentary information about us and the partnership that we have, and all the work that we're doing here in Virginia Beach City Public Schools to really foster a solid foundational reading instruction program for our earliest learners. So with that, I will pause and answer any questions you have.
Ms. Anderson.
Okay, Ms. Anderson.
I just want to know, how many points do they get for going through the letters program? Is it a three-hour course? Is it just points toward their license? What is it?
They do get recertification points, and I have to look, but it's a lot. I want to say it's around 250. It's a nice chunk of points that they do receive, but I'll be able to give that information to you in just a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Callen.
On page 15, you show a comparison between the old and the new, and the titling that accompanies the old makes reference to the phonological aspect of the screening process. It seems as though, from what I've heard, as I've met with some of the schools and the teachers that are involved, that there was a time, a long time ago when I was in school, that phonics was a foundational part of the reading process, and then we got evidence-based information that said, oh, that's just so old-school, let's not go there anymore. But it seems as though we were returning to the utilization of phonics. Just the way the page is aligned gives the impression that since we're no longer using the word, are we dispensing with the theory, if you will?
Interesting that you brought that up. While it might seem that way, and it does say Phonological Awareness Literacy Screener, I can assure you that the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener does dive deeply into that on-ramp. What are the important early foundational phonemic awareness and phonics skills that students need? Decoding and encoding, it's all included in the new screener, because that's what evidence-based literacy instruction is. I think I understand what you're saying, because there was a time where we focused more on the phonics instruction, and then there was a time in history we kind of moved away from it a little bit, and then we've really brought it back, especially, like I said, here in Virginia Beach, beginning 2018, 2019, we started diving back into that instruction, and now the State Department is ensuring that everything is in alignment. There's no more, if you want to, this is the evidence-based reading instruction that needs to occur based on these models that we've shared here. So we have a much tighter alignment to that now, and when you look at that structured literacy block, you can see that we have explicit times when phonics instruction is occurring.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you for that question.
Ms. Martin.
First of all, I want to say, as a college instructor in literature and English, I'm so excited about this, because I've seen some varying changes over the years, where students are very, very good at providing information, expressing information with technology, and they've lost some of their reading skills. And so this is fantastic. One of the things I'm really excited about is this predictive technology. I think it's an example of how AI can really help us tailor instruction to bring some students up to the level they need to be. I know we saw this in PPMC, and I was concerned about grades 6 through 12, and so my colleagues know, some of the professional development and strategies will be made available to grades 6 through 12, so they can begin to integrate that beyond K-5, which I think is really important to scoop up those kids, like my own son, who are beyond K-5 but may need some extra help with this. So thank you. Fantastic.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Lots of exciting stuff here. I'm wondering if you could tell me if there is any difference, I guess, in the timeframe of the screening of PALS as it transitions to VALS? It sounded like it was more comprehensive. Does that mean the testing is going to take longer, and what does that look like for our kiddos?
I'm glad you asked that question. That's one of the things the State Department is really looking into as far as their data. They've developed these subtests, and they want timing to be an important part of that. They'll be asking us to share with them how long it is taking. The intent will be that it doesn't take significantly longer than the PALS assessment does, even though there are different subtests, they're trying to keep it within that same timeframe. So we'll be providing some feedback on how long it's taking, and if they want to think or consider any adjustments before it goes on. To your point, the professional learning for teachers will be provided, similarly to as it was in the past, they'll have modules on the Virginia Department of Ed site for teachers to participate in. Actually, it's on the UVA site that they'll have as the professional learning to implement these new assessments.
Thank you, and it'll be helpful for us as a division to be able to have some input of what that actually looks like in practice. So, thank you.
Mr. Culpepper.
You said the State Department a couple times. What are you referring to?
The Virginia Department of Ed.
Okay, so that's not my question. You made several references to evidence-based learning, so I'm curious what your feedback loop is. Is it primarily SOLs, or is there more to it?
Could you say that again?
What's your measure of success? Is it SOLs, or is it others?
Well, when you're looking at our early literacy, because the VALS assessment that they're doing, or it was the PALS previously, that's for our earliest learners. We do it pre-K through 3rd grade, so we don't use the Standards of Learning to assess those earlier learners. We do that in 3, 4, and 5. So these are the assessments that we use for the earlier learners to really ensure that we're providing that foundation in the earliest grades to get our students to move from that learning to read, to reading to learn, in 3, 4, and 5.
Okay, so that's what you're looking to determine whether these changes are effective?
Yeah.
And make further changes if you need to, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
You're welcome.
And now we're coming to see the bylaw discussion on student representative to the School Board. School Board members Jennifer Franklin and Jessica Owens, and Kami Lanetti, School Board Attorney.
You want me to present? Better. All right, you should have a copy of the bylaw, in your proposed bylaw on your back. All right, yeah, a little bit closer. The bylaw we're proposing, I believe, is going to call it Bylaw 1-7. This came as a result of School Board members Owens and Franklin suggesting that you've heard it mentioned before. They met with Dr. Spence and I and Dr. Robinson, and we worked some of the language for it. What this proposing in the bylaw would be, the number of representatives would be two students from each comprehensive school, anticipating that would be one senior and one junior. There would be one student from Green Run Collegiate Charter School, one student from Renaissance Academy, and one student from Achievable Dreams High School Program, so a representation from all of your high school programs. The eligibility to serve would be, the student needs to be currently enrolled in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. After some discussion, it was decided that the grade point average would be 2.5. We suggest there should be no immediate family relationship with the School Board member or superintendent. The student should have no felony charges or CPS findings against them, and they should have no pending long-term disciplinary expulsion matters while serving. So if your student gets a charge on, that would obviously be awkward for you, because you sit on the disciplinary committees, the student would have to step off in that leadership role. However, they did not want to disqualify individuals who've had disciplinary matters, obviously, because we have a student from Renaissance Academy, and we want the diversity of opinions, so a student who's been through a long-term suspension or expulsion might have important information to provide to you. So we weren't disqualifying them, we just thought it might be too awkward to have them with a pending decision while you're working with them, so they would have to step off in their role as a representative while the disciplinary matter was pending. The selection process that we decided was that the superintendent's destiny develops the selection and replacement process. It was strongly felt by the individuals that talked about setting this up, that it would probably not be a good idea for School Board members to do this. The superintendent would be able to determine appropriately and handle the selection process. They are striving for diversity of student opinions and concerns. There was some discussion about the fact that we didn't necessarily want the student council members or leaders in other matters. We were actually hoping to see students who might otherwise not be in current leadership positions come on, so you got a diverse opinions. And again, that is encouraging the choice of students who are not currently in the leadership The term appointment every year would be July 1 through June 30. That way, we figured the students would possibly be able to come on for the retreat if you needed them during the retreat, because your retreat is usually the second week in July. The first year, obviously, since we're not upperminding, we don't have the selection process in place. It may not happen this first year if you decide to go forward with it, so the anticipating it might be October time period. If you decide to go forward for the FY '24 school year, that you would have to go ahead and do that a little bit later in the year, because it's almost too late in the year to do an application process. So you'd probably have to have it out for the students in August, taking some time from training, and that they would then come on board sometime around October was the anticipation. And again, the idea would be encourage appointment of a junior representative, hopefully that that junior would be walking along the process with the senior participating in, and then hopefully would become a senior representative next year, but it was no requirement. That person's not serving in that position, has not done a good job, it would allow the superintendent through his appointment process to determine whether another individual's there. But that way, you have somebody to back up and preparing to take on this position the following year, would have some institutional knowledge. The following, you would have some institutional knowledge. The duties and responsibilities, again, some of this set out, set out in the Virginia Code. School board members by Virginia Code, school board, student representatives, the school board cannot be voting members on the school board. So they serve in a advisory capacity only to the school board. They only will have those duties and responsibilities that you assign to them. So you are not currently suggesting anything other than advisory. If you want to give them other duties, if you want ceremonial duties for them to come to other meetings, those would things you would have to sign. The individual have no authority to go out in the community and do anything on your behalf unless you designate that for them. Again, as mentioned, they have no voting rights. Only one student representative would serve at each meeting or the retreat. You can invite others, but the intent was, although you appointed all those, only one is going to show up at your meetings. The representatives will attend, they're going to have, be assigned, uh, a meeting, hopefully at least one a year, and there will be an alternate for them. So they'll have to come up with a schedule to do this. They're going to figure out how they're going to do that, which will come. They will be responsible for finding the alternates if they cannot make their assigned meeting. They will then have, we're not sure the language, but we think it would be a student representative council meeting. So after your agenda comes out, they're going to have to meet. They're going to have to come to some consensus as to what the student representative opinion or advice is going to be the school board on the matters on the agenda. They're going to have to get that done. And that individual who's assigned for that meeting will then be responsible for bringing that information to the school board. We suggested that there be a school board mentor available at these meetings. And we suggest that would be the vice chair, the service of school board mentor and a contact. The superintendent will also designate an administrator who's going to provide the training and the supervision for the students, help individual their scheduled meetings, getting the council up and working on that. But during a meeting when, um, the student representative needs an assistant, we suggested would be the school board vice chair would be available to them to help them out through the meeting. Obviously, that can be designated to somebody else if the school board vice chair has to run the meeting. Oops, a little too fast. Right now, so those are the general terms of the proposed bylaw. And I don't know if Ms. Owens and Ms. Franklin wanted suggestions on how they came to these terms or what else they were envisioning for this, these representatives?
Thank you. Just in general, when I, uh, this idea was brought to me by a student, probably been three years now. She came to, uh, she actually got my contact information, and she asked about a student representative, uh, on the board because other districts have them, and students were interested in serving in that role. It was something that I started to explore. Ms. Franklin actually approached me, and I said, I've had a student, uh, come to me with this. We'd like to try and see this move forward. We were able to, uh, meet with, uh, students at the citywide SCA. We were able to get, uh, some feedback from students at, I don't remember what that other meeting was, at Salem Forum, the student forum. And basically, wanted to provide an opportunity for student voice, uh, in, in the processes. We wanted to have a, a situation where we don't have, uh, kind of a nothing without us, nothing for us without us. We want to make sure that they have a voice. Obviously, they can't vote, uh, but they have opinions about things that impact them. And so that's what we're hoping to do and provide the same opportunities that they would get in other districts since five of our sister cities already offered this.
Thank you. And I actually was excited to be a part of this committee just because, um, I actually, oddly enough, had a client whose daughter was the student rep in Norfolk. And so it was really a good opportunity to, um, get some really good insight from her perspective, from the family's perspective, how they felt like it worked. And they, they felt like it was a great opportunity for their child. And, you know, my position on this is that we have so many children now, so many students that graduate with almost an associate's, and some with an associate's or better. They're going to be out in the workforce, any leadership opportunities that they can have, where they can really shine and learn some great, um, leadership and communication skills working with adults. I think that is only going to help benefit them and us by getting at the student perspective on many things that they will, that will be impacted by our vote. I was going to ask Mr. Brower if, he actually was, um, in Norfolk and saw how the student representative had worked. And I really want to just say that I appreciate the feedback that I received and the conversations that, um, my colleagues were able to have with me. I thought you guys brought, um, some really good perspective. And so, um, I would like for Mr. Brower to share, and then maybe I could just share some of the comments that I've heard and some feedback and that we can maybe discuss on this. Sorry, Mr. Brower, I may put you on the hot seat.
Okay. Good evening.
Go ahead. So one of the concerns that I, I've heard is that the student rep might take, want to take up more time in the meeting than maybe we would, um, want to give them necessarily in terms of, you know, taking over a workshop or meeting. How did you see that work in, in the division that you're a part of?
So, just to give you a little background, two student representatives during my five years as principal at Norview High School became that student representative. I was proud of them because they were very well spoken. In most cases, they would speak when asked to give their opinion. But if there was something that they felt like, you know, maybe it was something that there needed to be some student voice, they would do the same as anyone else, um, be called upon and give that opinion. In those five years, I never saw or experienced a student that I would say might be out of control in terms of, you know, the etiquette, um, needed or required to be a member of the board.
Okay, good. So I, would you say that, although the concern is valid, obviously, um, uh, that, that you ever experienced, um, that, that happening in, in real life situation?
No, and as a building principal, one of the things that I would share with that student before they even began the process, um, and then after being selected, was to talk about the importance of the role and the impression, so to speak, because you're speaking sometimes in front of the public. And making sure that you, for me anyway, you've represented not only the school building, but your family in a presentable manner.
Thank you. I appreciate your input on that. And then, um, go ahead. Did you want to?
No, no, go ahead. I thought you had another question.
Oh, I, no, I, I, does anyone?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, Norfolk, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I reviewed a lot of bylaws for various, um, school boards in the state in preparation for this discussion. And, um, I don't see anything on the books where, um, Norfolk has their students participating in the discussion on the information portion. Theirs seems to, um, focus on giving a presentation at the beginning of the meeting. Is that accurate?
Not necessarily a presentation. Most, and I'm just speaking from my experience, most of the interaction with the student was based on student matters or concerns. There were a lot of things that may have been discussed or part of the meeting that wasn't even, that those things weren't shared. So some of the information that you all get in your packets, they wouldn't see or be privy to. Nothing with employees, um, a lot of, I, I don't want to say budget because I think they did get an opportunity to see the budget and where monies were being spent. But there were a lot of things that they were not privy to. Things that, um, may be concerned them or students directly, yes. But other matters or concerns, no.
Okay, so, um, let me see if I can be more concise. Did the students participate in the discussion on the information and action items on the agenda? Or they speak at the beginning? Thank you. Um, and I, I will yield, but I have more questions in a moment.
Support Mr. Brown?
Not for him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Martin?
I like this proposal. So I want to point out that the city of Virginia Beach has five boards that have high school representation. Those are the Clean Community Commission, Public Library Board, Active Transportation Board, Human Rights Commission, and Parks and Rec Board. They do serve, um, with a junior being appointed that serves as a senior, and then the senior for one year. So there are two representatives in each of those. I also want to point out that at eighteen years old, uh, those students are then eligible to run for school board. And it would be fantastic for them to gain some experience. I see this as an internship. If you're familiar with the Sworson Program, Lead Virginia, or the Rural Leadership Institute, they all have or are starting high school programs to get high school students more engaged, with what we do and becoming more engaged citizens. So I appreciate all your hard work on this policy. And again, I see it as an internship, no different than serving as a page in the House or Senate. And while pages don't have an active role during session, they do develop relationships with their legislators. And they also do read policy and begin to understand how the legal system works and how representation works. So I really do support this idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then, one of the other concerns that was raised is, you know, making this a, a unbiased selection for the school board members. And so I, there were various ideas that came up that I thought were interesting. I have to tell you that from a student perspective, they also do not want this to be a popularity contest. Um, and that's why we added the portion in, in the slide about making sure that we encourage students who are not currently serving in leadership positions. That was kind of a twofold thing in the sense that we don't want to overload those students because we all know that, um, it's really hard to spread yourself too thin and, um, and, and to be committed to the task at hand. And then striving for diversity of student opinions and concerns. So, you know, they also, in, in our discussions, right, Ms. Owens, would, would agree that we want to have students that might not necessarily have a voice right now and could really bring a full student perspective. So one of the suggestions was that we have, um, all eligible applicants, um, from that school and just maybe do it as a lottery, where you pull a junior and a senior. And so I, I'd like to maybe open up discussion on that point as well.
Ms. Molyneux?
I think what I like the best is that it's a different student every meeting. And so, um, I know there are some districts that have one student that serves for the whole year, but I like this, the rotation of different students and different voices.
Ms. Brown? Did you want to speak?
All right, um, so, Ms. Lanetti, um, you mentioned that training would happen between August and October. Can you talk a little bit about, um, the staff time that that would entail?
This might be a better question for the superintendent, but the understanding was if, I think the actual anticipation is if we get on a regular schedule, obviously, if it's this year, you're not going to make the time periods, that you would do it in the spring sometime, probably in the May-June time period, if you have them appointed or elected to their, their positions. Then you would start the training so that they could come on by the retreat. I think was the anticipation. So I think the actual training would probably happen towards the end of the school year. And the time for that, I really, I have to, does, pass it back over to the superintendent, but I think there would be an administrator who's going to have to come in with them. I think it's the first year that you're hired this year, once you should have the training up. And I would think that you would expect the students, once they've gotten experience, to take over some of these leadership roles. But that's just me anticipating what I think the superintendent would be designating. But that hasn't been drafted up and determined yet, to my knowledge.
Okay.
Hasn't been, hasn't been drafted. We have had some discussions, um, well, let's say hasn't been drafted. The, the application and all of that was drafted based on preliminary discussion. So we had an idea of what might be, what, what that might entail. I think that the staff time involved would start at the school level. So we would have, um, school administrators, uh, working with us to review applications because we would want to, obviously, open it to anybody who meets the criteria. So they would review applications and then put, put forward their school, individual school names. My team would review that, would come through my office to review that and make sure that we're pushing forward, good, good folks for you all. And then, um, the other side of that would just be managing the process. So I've talked to the team over in Student Leadership, um, or Student Activities folks. And, um, it, it will take some time, for sure. I know, so you all know Marian Laffler. She's definitely, um, interested and excited about the idea of working with a group like this, but also acknowledged that with her other responsibilities, she would need some help. And so she suggested that she would also have, um, somebody else in the office, probably John Cosmarano, to, uh, support that work. So that, um, that's as far as I've gone into the process at this point.
Okay.
So, um, and I can't remember who said this, but, um, I, I totally think that it would be great for whoever becomes that senior representative to, again, take on some of that leadership role and actually take over some of the training responsibility, which not only gives them leadership, but also a good opportunity to get some training skills as well.
That was one I had sent you. So can a child whose parent is an employee of VBCPS be a student representative?
Sure, I'd like to, um, just weigh in. We have it that they can't be in immediate relationship with the school board or the superintendent. But certainly, we have lots of students in our division whose parents work in our division. And, um, they are not, uh, held out from any other activity that, uh, the, the school offers. And so, uh, if your mom is a teacher, if your mom is a custodian or a lunch lady, that wouldn't prohibit you from participating and, and being able to have a say.
Um, and then these students, would they be participating in the information and work, um, action discussions?
I don't know that it would be a, a discussion back and forth, but they're able to see the agenda in advance and see if there are certain topics that the students have a, a opinion on that they would like to bring to the board. And when we come to, so yes, for the information, uh, portion, if there's a, a topic that relates to students and that they have a student voice to bring, they can buzz in and make a statement, or certainly talk to the, uh, vice chair prior to the meeting, which is why we have that liaison role, um, to say, here are the four things on the agenda that, uh, students want to bring voice to. You know, when is the most appropriate time for us to, to bring that voice? Ideally, when we're having that discussion, at the beginning of the discussion or at the end of the discussion is what I would expect, a time where we would hear from them on that topic. I haven't heard from any other districts about, uh, students monopolizing time or having a filibuster or anything like that. I was able to talk with, uh, I can't remember her name, with the School Board Association, and she was able to talk to me about, uh, how some other districts are doing it outside of our seven cities. And, uh, uh, Charlottesville, somebody up there, has this kind of a setup where they have a representative from the different schools in a rotation. And it, it seems to work for them, so.
Um, and, and also, remember that this is a collective of representatives from, throughout the division. And so it will be their responsibility, being on this, uh, committee and this, this, um, role, to be able to collaborate before our meetings with other divisions or with other, um, schools and have a collective, just, um, a set of points if they have something that they're interested in discussing on the agenda. And then, you know, as they're, you know, the discussion rolls, then if they have some dialogue, they'll raise their hand and, and just provide some student feedback on that.
Okay, and this is my last, it's really more of a, um, a comment, um, for the time being. So, um, and I had emailed you about this. So I actually prefer a lottery system of all eligible applicants and us drawing it in a workshop. I think that it truly makes everybody have an opportunity to, um, have the same, same opportunity to be selected and serve. I think it removes any potential for bias. And, um, I think that, you know, we, we could probably do that pretty quickly in a workshop, and it would remove any staff time. So, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Owens and Ms. Franklin, because I know y'all put a lot of work in this. So I'm gathering from Mr. Brower's comment that in Norfolk, they had, um, you had one individual to do it. Because you said in your five years that you had had two representatives. So, um, I'm assuming that in Norfolk, it's not on a rotating basis. Is, is that correct, Ms. Owens, Ms. Franklin? Because I know y'all probably reached out to Norfolk.
Correct, and in Norfolk, they have kind of one or one and an alternate that serves through the school year.
Okay. I'm, I'm trying to, and, and I've had several discussions, um, about this with Ms. Franklin, and I appreciate the time she spent with me. So we have twenty-five different students. And we're not sure how they're going, going to be chosen yet. And then they're going to meet. And then they're going to meet twice a month. These 25 are going to get together twice a month because our agenda comes out twice a month. So we're going to have to rely that they're going to meet twice a month. But yet, if I'm one of those 25, I only come to one meeting a year. So that's correct. I kind of have a problem with that because you're having 25 students spread out. We're not knowing how they're elected. We're not knowing if they really represent their school. And you've excluded the student council people who have been elected by their school. Is it a popularity contest? I don't know. Was our election a popularity contest? I don't know. In some cases, they are. In some cases, I would say that there's students that represent their student body well. So we're leaving out the student body president and we're leaving out the student council because we want to, I guess, spread the love, spread the whatever. So I'm not sure how these 25 are going to get input and actually represent their school. So we have them meeting, and then we have, you know, the last meeting in February, Bayside comes. And we're discussing something, maybe an information. And then the next meeting in March, Kempsville comes. And now that, the Bayside person had input, is now on voting. So Kempsville sees that part of the meeting. And then the next one, Cox comes, and nothing's consistent. So I, I don't know how we're going to actually get benefit or input and how these 25 students are going to get input.
Sure, thank you. And that was something that we talked about. And in fact, when we went to the Citywide SCA, the input there was kind of, we don't want to double serve. However, they would welcome the student representative to attend some of those meetings within their school so that they are able to get different feedback from different groups within their school. The meeting that the board representatives are going to have twice a month can be a Zoom meeting, an hour Zoom meeting that's scheduled. Everybody knows when it is. It's on the calendar. And they're able to come back, maybe it's two hours, whatever they decide, because we want some student ownership in that. And they're able to say, here are the items that are on the agenda. You have time to go and get that information, feedback from students in your building, attend meetings. Make sure students in your building know who you are so that you can put out an email or however they're going to communicate and say, if you have thoughts, come to me. I'm your student rep. Some students may feel more comfortable talking to a student representative rather than coming to speak at a board meeting or approaching an adult board member. And so there would be built-in situations in each school for them to go back. And they would have to be engaging with their school and with different organizations within their school in order to have that input and feedback.
And I think with a lot of high schools going back to the one lunch, I think that's a great opportunity for students to meet with their student board rep and provide input and have those discussions as well, so.
And the calendar, you mentioned the rotation, that would be set right at the beginning of the year. So they would be able to see, here's all the board meetings for the year, and here's what school is going to have their board rep there. So they can plan in advance. They can know, oh, don't schedule something that day. Or I have something scheduled. Let me find a sub and switch out, trade with another school. So they know what's coming up. And if they see something that interests them, Cox sees something that interests them on this upcoming agenda, they're able to see what school is going to be there. And they can reach out to that member and say, hey, I know this is a big deal at our school. Here are some things that have come up about that topic in the past at our school. I want to make sure I give you that information.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I know we have input from lots of folks. I mean, tonight, we have 111 opportunities to hear that input. We also, and we have students coming, and I'm all for input. And we have, students may email us, citizens may email us. Students are on, I was at the meeting at Princess Town High School about the, you know, new schools. Students are on that. Students were there. The equity, we have students on equity. So I guess, I guess I know that we have so many opportunities for students to reach out. And I mean, three or four or five of us have met with them at Starbucks and Panera, whatever. And they can email us. So I just don't know the added benefit. Is the added benefit to try to train them into leadership roles? Is the added benefit to get more input from them? Because when they talk to us, we can't respond, but that's the same with anybody. I mean, citizens come and during the meeting, they're like, why aren't they talking back to us? They're not, you know, is it for that? Because then we have the challenge of, do we need to have one for parents? Do we need to have a parent person sitting here? Do we need to have a special education person? I mean, they have other avenues too, but they don't have this avenue. So that kind of bothers me. Dr. Spence, with your student forum, can you kind of explain how that works? Because I know we've got citywide student council, but they're not advisory. And we have students on some of these committees that I've listed. But how exactly does your student forum work? Can you briefly explain that to us?
Yes, so we have students who represent each of our high schools, and we meet with them on a bimonthly basis. Generally, we work with the students early in the year to talk, to develop the topics they're interested in talking about. And then we will bring our staff in to meet with those students. And our staff will share the work that they're doing, and then they'll gather feedback on their work. So it's more informing of the work that we're doing administratively and in response to the kinds of questions that we get from them. So they want to know why we made certain decisions about use of technology or what's going on with our cafeterias and food service. And so we'll bring those folks in to sit with them and kind of talk through our decision-making process and get their feedback and input. And on occasion, there is something that I may be interested in learning a little bit more about, something that will pop up. And I will put that on the agenda to talk with them about.
And how are they selected?
So they're selected at the school level. Their principals select them.
Okay, and they, and you meet, how often do you meet?
Every other month.
Okay, and so you're getting input from them and you're asking them questions, what topics they're interested in. How are they getting input? How do you know that it's not just that one person's, or do you care? Is it just that one student from Kempsville, his or her ideas? Or are they getting input from their school community and how is that done?
I think they approach it differently. We don't have a formal process that we've set up for them. I would imagine in a situation like this, you'd probably need something a little more formalized. But we don't have a formal process. So some of them will come in with questions they've received from their classmates. Others are just sort of representing their own thinking in that moment.
And how do you see that, getting input from that, different than this? I mean, obviously, they report to you and your staff. These are going to, I guess, not report to us because they're going to report to the 25, but they're going to give us input. Is that basically the difference? This one group gives you input, and then this group is going to get school board input?
Yeah, and again, so they kind of drive the topics and the agenda for those conversations that I have with them. And this, I think, would be more driven by your agenda.
All right, I've still got some more questions, but I'm not going to monopolize the next one. Thank you.
Ms. Manning.
Thank you. I have quite a few here, so I'll try to get through them pretty quickly. I do appreciate the intent and the work that has gone in on this topic. I appreciate the intent that you want to give more leadership opportunities to students and get, gather input. So please know that I appreciate that part. My concern is more about process, and I've talked with Ms. Franklin a little bit about this. I truly believe that this is going to cause a lot of administrative burden. And Dr. Spence kind of laid that out a little bit. We're already talking about at least two people in student leadership office that's going to have to be involved with this. We're also going to have to have school administrators at the school level involved with this, Dr. Spence's team involved with this. So that, while I, while I actually like the idea of having more students across the district, I just don't, I just don't, I'm just very concerned about the administrative costs that is going to come with this in a time where I personally want to cut administrative costs. So that's kind of my concern on that.
Can I just ask you a question on that? So in this committee, in this board committee, I mean, could they have a chair and a vice chair in this committee, the student committee? Where?
Yeah, you're still going to have to have adult oversight to help run the meetings, to get the communications out.
Instead of 24 emails, then they'll have, you know, just, they'll have a leader to go and provide that.
Every student has to be trained. So you have 30 students that have to be trained. Plus, if one decides that they don't want to complete it mid-year, you're going to have a new student that needs to be trained. They have to be trained in parliamentary procedure. I don't know who's going to do that. So that may even be yet another administrative cost. So that's my concern on that. I don't like the terminology in here where it says that they're advising us. I like, I would prefer more of an input capacity. Okay, that's in here a couple of times. And that was one of my first things that I sent. Regarding the students from Renaissance Academy under item B2E, it says, "A student representative who receives long-term suspension or expulsion will not be eligible to serve." However, most students who are at the Renaissance Academy have had a long-term expulsion or suspension that's kind of basically been deferred. But they have been sent there because they've done some things against the student code of conduct. Are they still going to be allowed to serve as a student rep?
Thank you. We do want a representative from Renaissance. They can't get an infraction of a long-term suspension or expulsion while they're serving in that role.
Okay, so if a student got sent out of their school, which we technically call it a suspension or an expulsion, and they get sent to Renaissance Academy, so they say they were dealing drugs at their school. They get sent to Renaissance Academy, they can then apply to be a student rep on the school board?
If they're in good standings and they have the, at Renaissance, if they are in good standings and they have the GPA, then they can still have a voice even though they made a bad choice.
So, and I know that we have students who opt to stay at Renaissance Academy, and they're not necessarily any longer in that discipline status. So I could maybe support those students being involved, but I have a hard time supporting a student who's actually been disciplined, serving on our board. So that's on that topic. I don't support the superintendent being told to develop a process for selecting the students. I think that should be something that's done by the school board, not the superintendent. It says in item D2 that the student representatives will only have those duties and responsibilities specifically assigned by the board. What are those specific duties and responsibilities?
They'll be assigned as we, as a board, decide and as we have student input. So perhaps the students say, yes, we'd like to be a part of awards. We would decide, is that appropriate? Their role and responsibility, though, is to get input from those at their school and to be able to talk between schools to bring the voice back to the board.
So I think that, I would just like to see that spelled out. Like, because it says that the school board will assign those duties, but we haven't, we don't really know what those are yet. We haven't had that conversation. So I would like to see those spelled out. I would also like to see spelled out more defined. I personally would not be able to support a student representative sitting on the board with us and giving input and, as we do. I maybe wouldn't have a problem with a student rep giving us a presentation, maybe for a few minutes, kind of like Dr. Spence does in his superintendent's report, maybe giving a report based on their views that they have collaborated with other students and kind of come with different viewpoints, not just their own. Might be able to support that. And again, I don't, I don't support the superintendent providing the training and supervision. I think that that should be done by the school board. So those are my general concerns with bylaw, how it's written right now.
Ms. Anderson.
I just have a couple clarifying questions. So it's my understanding that the way this is written now, these students would be able to participate in asking questions or giving input during action. Is that correct? During the action part of our meeting, is that correct?
I would say that anything that's on our action has already been on information. So they have the opportunity to ask a question or provide some feedback during the information portion. They're not voting members, and so they don't need to be involved during the action portion.
Okay, so you're not, you're saying no during action? Okay. I like the idea of these students being able to give their viewpoint on certain matters that pertain to, you know, to students in general. Maybe at the beginning either of the workshop or again, at the beginning of our formal meeting as well. I know that other students also have the opportunity to speak at that time, but my suggestion might be to allow our student representative to speak first at the beginning of student comments. Just, you know, in general, that's just a suggestion that I have. And will they meet as a group each month? That's my understanding. You're saying they're going to be meeting as a group each month, even maybe through Zoom, and then choose one person each month? Or are you saying that they would be chosen at the beginning of the year so they know when their time is coming up?
Yeah, that schedule will already be assigned, what schools would be assigned to what meeting. Now, if there's two, you know, if there's a junior and a senior from that school, between the two of them, they can decide who's going to be speaking.
Okay. And who would, how will they choose who is going to be representing for each meeting? Will the students choose themselves or will we have someone who intervenes as an adult who intervenes and helps them choose a speaker each month?
Well, it's already assigned. Bayside is speaking this week. Next week, it's Cox.
Is it just a sign up, though? Like, when they come to their first meeting, they would just sign up for what month they want to go to or what meeting they want?
It's just assigned. It's just, here's the rotation. And the rotation can, you know, maybe you start with alphabetical order of the schools in rotation listed on the dates of the meeting. And so they know from the very first time that they walk in the door, here's the dates that my school is expected to be at the meeting to provide input.
Okay, all right. That's all I have for now.
Ms. Mellet?
So we often hear from citizens that say, we're not teaching civics. We're not doing certain things in our school division. And I'm struggling with the hangup with this particular presentation. And I've been listening, and I'm thinking, what is so bad about an opportunity for our students to be engaged in civics? What a wonderful opportunity. When I was in school, I didn't know who the board members were. I didn't even know who the board members were in most of my years in the classroom. And here, we're going to provide our students an opportunity to rotate. Not one member who's going to sit here the whole year, who might be, who might grow to be strong-willed or to have, you know, different opinions about different board members. It is simply an opportunity to rotate 25 students through a school, a school year. Admin costs, please, please just stop and think for a moment. You as individual board members and the time that you take with our administration when you have questions, the money that has been spent on school board member priorities. We spend a lot of time on that and a lot of money on that. I don't think the students are going to rise to that level. But I think this is a really wonderful program. I think it's also going to give students who are in fifth grade now an opportunity to think, gosh, I hope that when I'm in 11th grade, I have the opportunity to serve and to meet twice a month with groups of students from across the division. Opportunities for kids at Kempsville to have discussion with kids at Bayside and Green Run and Cox, who they may not ever have the opportunity, they may not have the opportunity to do that ever. Each school has its own unique characteristics, and to give kids the opportunity... and to give kids the opportunity to come together and discuss all of those different things that happen in our buildings. Um, I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and I and I ask that the board really just stop and consider the benefits of something and maybe not be, I mean, we can work out the kinks between now and when we have to um um choose these students, but instead of being negative, let's look at this wonderful opportunity for um our students.
Um, and I just wanna say that I I don't know about Ms. Owens, but I was so incredibly impressed when we had that student forum. And it was great for students from all sides of the division to be able to say, this impacts me. This impacts me, oh, my gosh. And they got excited. They were so excited to be able.
It doesn't impact them.
Oh, right. And 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 they were so excited to be able to discuss that amongst other students that, again, they would not have that opportunity. So I I think that's a very valid point, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Callen.
It's an interesting conversation, and I've heard lots of interesting points from both sides. And if I go with my initial impression, my initial impression would be, well, are there not already in existence opportunities for students to share their perspective and opinions? And as we've witnessed virtually every meeting now for many, many months, uh, there's no shortage of student opinions and an opportunity for them to engage in the civic process, which I compliment them on and have done so. But it seems as though to add another component to, I'll raise my hand and admit that being on the school board has introduced challenges that I didn't see coming. And so my preference would be to stay with the current arrangement that exists, if for no other reason than for new people like me to still try and get their hands and feet wrapped around this process. There's also, and I don't wanna sound too negative, but the reality of life leads to the fact that something can be introduced today, and at some point in the future, it has morphed into something far more than it was intended to become. And all of a sudden, you're asking ourselves, how did we get here? And typically, it's a slow process of incrementalism that gets you from point A to point Z. Uh, and so my concern is the unintended consequences or the unforeseen possibilities that could exist tomorrow just cause me to say, let's go slow here. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Brown?
Okay.
Wanna remind you, we're gonna give you about three more minutes because we really need to move on. SWAM needs at least thirty to forty minutes.
So Dean Nine says, um, and I'm kinda going backwards to something that we had discussed. So I know that it was said that these students would not be participating in action items, but um, D nine indicates an expectation to follow parliamentary procedure, which our bylaw would then say that, in fact, the students are in the parliamentary and procedure process. And um, you know, I understand everybody saying, oh, we have an opportunity, but I I I feel like the bylaw, as it's written, we shouldn't, we really need to make sure we get it right before we um support it. Um, I'm not really looking to um support bylaws that are not um in their final position as we intended. Um, I I recognize, and by the way, I know that um both Ms. Franklin and Ms. Owens, I know that you guys put a lot, a lot of heart into this. And um, I just wanted to make sure that I told you guys that. I know that you guys have put a lot of heart into this, and I I'm not trying to be critical of it. I just, um, I feel like there's maybe a lot of room for um improvement. And so far, as being involved in um civics, you know, um, I had emailed the whole board about and some senior staff about how city council is doing mock meetings for our um eighth graders. And I didn't get a single email back about it, um, which is kind of surprising. I didn't get a call, nothing, it never came up. Um, so I think if we're really gonna, you know, embrace civics as a division and in this, that, you know, something that would be a much simpler task should have been something that we could tackle. But um, when it comes to staff time and the cost of staff time, I cannot s- I can't draw um a correlation from that cost from a student board member and an elected person of the people that were elected with an expectation that they were gonna get all that information gathered from staff to vote. Um, that's why we use staff time, so we can vote and make decisions. And so um, I I really do have a lot of concerns about the staff time. But um, you know, I am, I'm willing to compromise a little on um where I think it would be, but I don't think that it's there yet. Thank you.
Good. I'm sorry, and I was just gonna say, now, keep in mind, when it comes to, I I don't perceive that we're gonna have students uh sending emails to to Ms. Lanetti or to um, you know, all to to Regina or, you know, I I don't perceive that this is going to happen like that. And I and I understand the the concern about that because, yes, uh, overloading our staff is always um a concern. But the fact is that I don't, in practice, we have people that have seen this happen. Um, i- i- I I think it's it's a valid concern, but in practice, it has, it just doesn't resolve itself like that. Um, I did wanna just bring up one thing, too, and and I do wanna make sure that i- in order to respect their time, that we do allow them to be able to leave at a certain time at their discretion. So maybe after information, they could go ahead and excuse themselves. But um, and they're not gonna be sitting on the dais and that sort of thing, so. And then when it comes to parliamentary procedure, and Ms. Owens, maybe you could discuss this as well. But, you know, to be honest with you, I mean, I went through Ms. Lanetti's initial parliamentary procedure um and the training two years ago. And I, as much as it was very interesting, Ms. Lanetti, um, I I honestly could not. I I, no, of course not, of course. Um, but I would say that I really, you know, I I think we all, um, you know, struggle even as adults with with trying to remember some of that. And I I and quite frankly, I think early learners, younger learners, um, catch on much more quickly than maybe someone who has, uh, you know, other things. So, or maybe some seasoning behind them. So, you know, I I really think that uh, I and I hear the concerns, and I appreciate all of the feedback. I very much do. But um, I I think that some of the things that we've brought up um will resolve itself just organically, so.
Okay, we need to move on.
Okay, I just wanna know, does this have to be put in a bylaw? Could this happen, and we approve this to do this without putting it in a bylaw? That so that if we have to tweak it as we go along, we could, we would have to come back, oh, my gosh, we gotta go. You know, it takes a lot to get changes made in a bylaw. Um, but I think if if we enacted this without putting it in a bylaw, that then we could tweak it a little bit to make it fit our, as we go along. I mean, I, there's an awful lot about it that we had a lot of questions tonight and, but like, like I said, I don't, I don't know, I don't think we're ready to put it in a bylaw yet, but we might be ready to enact this and say that we would like to try this, and we'd like to do it. We'd like to tweak this as we go along. Does anybody have any?
We did have that discussion. My suggestion was because this is a student representative for you, for the school board, that you as a school board should put it bylaw. But you could just have a simple bylaw that says, you know, in accordance with the statute, we are adopting the student representative of the school board. And then you could move it to a regulation policy that details. And I actually talked about how you would go about the procedures that you would use to find the students, recruit them, train them, the council procedures. That could show up in a bylaw regulation, so you could simplify your bylaw. I just felt since this is a choice that the school board is making, it's not required by law, it's that you were making that you would put in a bylaw to acknowledge that you had chosen this option, but the details could show up in a policy regulation if you wanted to.
I I think that might be a better solution, and that way, we could, we could kinda work on it for the first year, maybe the second year, we maybe make other adjustments. But um, I I don't like all these guidelines and these specific things that we've put in this bylaw. I just, a simple bylaw of having a student representative is all we need, period. And then we can tweak it as we go along. We may decide that we wanna have just two a year, I mean, down the road. Uh, but, you know, instead of having twenty-five. Um, but I think that's something that we need to work on, and we need to give this a chance um, without tying ourselves to all the things that were written in this um, this bylaw, the way it's written.
I would think that you would show a policy within show up in section five, which is your student section. So you would have a bylaw, I'm gonna call bylaw one seven right now, that you've you've adopted the concept of a student representative. You designate the superintendent to draft the policies and get them up to PRC to look at. And then we would probably put it in section five, would make sense to me.
Okay. All right, let's um go to our final one for the workshop, and that is uh the procurement and SWAM. And Ms. Crystal Peck.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Wiggs, Vice Chairwoman Wiem, School Board Members, Dr. Spence. This presentation um came about because the city asked um whether we, as a school system, would like to participate in a disparity study along with the city. So Dr. Spence asked us to put some information together to to present to the full board on our um processes, our policy, some data surrounding that, both on the operating side and from the CIP side. So I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Carla Smith. She is the Director of Procurement and also Melissa Ingram, and she's the Executive Director of Facility Services.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So today, we're gonna walk you through um what our current SWAM policy is, our process, our current SWAM reporting, future SWAM reporting, our current and potential SWAM support. Uh, talk a little bit about the city disparity study and a little bit of discussion, and then, of course, our recommendation. Our current school board policy shows that this is a joint responsibility between the Department of Budget and Finance and the School Division Services to report on the following: small business, woman-owned business, service-disabled veteran business, and minority-owned business spend. We have been tracking our SWAM spend since around 2016. The procurement office, our current SWAM process, w- we work that through our RFPs and our bids. Um, we have a template at the bottom, at the bottom of the screen. You see where it says type of ownership. That shows up on all of our transmittal pages when a response is submitted, as well as they are to um fill in what's called a substitute W nine, taxpayer ID number and certificate form. And that is to the right, that section. They fill in both of those sections. Once we determine that we're gonna do business with an individual, we send them a link to our new Oracle system, and they register and self-report their SWAM. We get that link back once they filled it in, and we will take those two items and we will match it against what they filled in. So in the event that they don't fill it in completely or check the wrong box, we do a double check on it. This is actually something very new that we are doing because we just went to um Oracle uh April the seventh. We went completely um through to Oracle. Uh, the last time we looked at our supplier database was around 2008. And so we are, as we come into the summer months, we are starting a project where we will be reaching out to all of our suppliers to make sure that they um have registered completely. I feel there's certain, there are probably suppliers that got missed in the fray, that have not self-reported. So we're gonna validate all that information to make sure that we have everybody um marked in there. So I'm gonna go ahead and let Ms. Ingram talk to you a little bit about what they do on the facility side.
Um, thanks, Ms. Smith. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, so as Ms. Smith just explained, the process of SWAM as it relates to the operating budget, um, in which the Office of Facility Service also employs contractors and vendors such as painting and other general contracting and maintenance contract needs. Um, I'll be discussing the process as it relates to the CIP funding. Um, it's important to note before I begin that there's also some CIP spend um that gets captured and reporting through this Oracle system and that we'll be talking about through today's presentation. Um, and um, most of those are work orders in terms of professional services for contracts that we have um designed and other things like that. Um, so as um the reporting relates to CIP projects, um, these are much longer projects than some of our normal procurements, often spanning roughly three to four years between um planning and completion of the projects. Um, SWAM classifications are collected in two different ways. So they're collected through the instruction to bidders in our front-end specifications. Um, they're first collected during the bid process. So the contractor will give us their SWAM participation plan, so who they anticipate their subcontractors would be and their SWAM classification. And then they also go ahead at the completion of the project, um, just in the case that any subcontractor who first at the bid, you know, decided that, you know, they, I can't really be a part of this job, or if they end up um having to work with another additional contractor, they also report their SWAM participation form at the completion of this process. So those are the two ways um the SWAM process works when we have CIP bids. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Smith to talk a little bit about our SWAM reporting.
So the reports that we do are based on a fiscal year. The spend data that we have placed up here is basically for goods and services, including hardware, software, furniture, athletic equipment. Um, it doesn't include any of the construction, which is gonna be uh, Ms. Ingram's gonna talk to you about on the next slide. We have data that we pull from three different sources. So we have Oracle, which is basically all our operating funds. We have, um, and it may have some construction um built into it. We have school funds online, which is the funds that are at the school level. Uh, there's about three to four million that come through that. We have the procurement card spend, which is um ten to eleven million. And then, of course, Oracle uh gives us the remaining balance. In August, after the books close, we um take that data from those three sources. Um, we put it together. We take things like utility payments, employee benefits, medical payments out of that spend. We then um turn that over to a third party that compiles the data for us and um gives us back this report. And if you look at the report, you can see that we have about twenty-four percent diversity spend. But if you see that chart at the top, the chart just below shows you how that diversity spend by type is broken up. And so the majority of our um SWAM spend is small business, about seventy percent of it. And then it drops down to twenty-three percent for woman-owned. And then going to the right, you see the slivers get smaller and smaller and smaller. So, you know, definitely, there is an opportunity for us to improve on our minority identification, participation, and reporting. As I had mentioned a few moments ago, uh, we had been using a previous system called BySpeed. Um, on April seventh, we converted from BySpeed and moved everything to Oracle, um, to one central supplier database. And once we go through that project this summer, where we're reaching out to all of our suppliers, making sure that they have self-reported, um, I do see, you know, some natural improvement just from that because the reporting itself is gonna be better than it has been previously. I think that uh, that's all I have on that. Um, the spend that we have, um, in this chart, you can see The spend that we have um, in this chart, you can see fifty percent of our spend, about ninety million dollars, is in these top eleven categories. And so these top eleven categories, like the trucks and buses, office furniture and supplier, um, office furniture supplies, they are woman-owned. Then we have the three below, uh, the main building contractors, general contractors, plumbing and heating. That's a place where we see um, more opportunity through subcontractors to be able to affect the spend. But all of the ones that are not highlighted are basically um, state or national cooperative contracts and corporations, which doesn't lend itself uh, much to affecting uh, the bottom line as far as minority spend. And I'm going to turn this back over to Ms. Ingram to talk about her spend.
Okay, there's, thanks, Ms. Smith. So um, as we've been discussing, so in Oracle, we do have the general contractor for our large CIP projects in the system as they get paid. However, with the larger projects, that's what's in front of you on the slide here, the subcontractor work is also a large part of that. So um, we have worked over the years with procurement to um, try to um, identify and report the, the amount of work that the subcontractor is involved in and the SWAM classification. We'll continue to do so um, through these processes here. But um, it's, it's important to note what we've been doing in the past for current reporting is um, the reporting being project-based. So not really a fiscal year-based um, as we are doing in procurement. So that's something that we're trying to work on. Um, and again, the data is provided by the general contractor, giving both their contractor classifications and the subcontract classifications. So when looking at these five projects you have in front of you, um, five of our last biggest projects, our SWAM participation rate is um, between forty-six to seventy-seven percent, which is a total of a hundred forty-four point six million dollars. If we look at a little bit more closely, as Ms. Smith did on the procurement reporting, our minority spend is a little bit less than that at zero to five point four percent of the total project spends, which is, equates to six point seven million dollars. So as I mentioned again, um, the next slide talks a little bit about the future SWAM reporting and what we've been working on in order to capture and identify our subcontractors' classifications. Again, understanding that the fiscal year reporting are going to help us get a more complete picture of what our SWAM participation actually is. So we've begun some amendments and to incorporate in our contract documents that um, not only will they have to at the big time and at the completion of the project, um, report their SWAM participation, but also at the end of the fiscal year. So we're hoping with that and the um, new Oracle system just starting to get implemented, our offices will be able to align um, this information into one report where we can see the fiscal year data in, in one fell swoop. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Smith again.
VB CPS since 2016 has been attending the annual minority business conference. Typical businesses that we meet at that conference are t-shirts, businesses, DJs, painters, landscapers and similar. We engage with each person that approaches our booth. Although ninety-eight percent of what they sell are not items that we generally buy, one hundred percent of the time, we do redirect them to where um, it is most appropriate, albeit um, PTA, citywide, PTA, schools, um, or the city for the things that they're actually um, looking to uh, work with. We do all of our solicitations through DemandStar, which is a hosted um, bid and RFP site. Only suppliers that are registered on that site um, pull as potential responders. If SWAM businesses are not registered on the site, they miss the opportunity for um, responses. Therefore VB CPS is going to supplement um, our supplier list by going to the SBSD site published by the State of Virginia to identify potential SWAM responders and include them going forward as supplemental suppliers in our solicitations. This way, um, they will at least have the opportunity to um, submit for some of the uh, bids and RFPs that we've put out. So the city disparity study was conducted in 2017, 2018. And from that study, there were twelve implemented recommendations that I have listed on the slide. And in looking at those twelve recommendations, we basically went down the list and said, okay, number three, improving networking and outreach, that's something that we um, we will be doing, we have been doing and we will be doing going forward. Number four, improved data collection, we're actively doing that. Number five, annual growth monitoring, we've been doing that since 2016. Number ten, we always have prompt payment. And number eleven, improved contracting opportunity notifications, which was that bullet I just talked about on the last slide. We are going to start integrating that. The city was able to accomplish uh, number one, um, the aspirational goal. Number six, undertake a local SWAM certification program. Number seven, increase small business subcontracting opportunities. Number eight, implement project-specific contract goals. Number nine, unbundle large contracts. And number twelve, implement a small business set-aside program by doing number two, which was establishing a dedicated SWAM office. We did speak with um, Livia, the Director of uh, Purchasing over at the city. And she did kind of walk us through um, you know, what configuration that they have. And she said she does have four employees that work specifically in a SWAM office. An account clerk, an administrative specialist, a minority business coordinator, and a procurement services coordinator that work um, diligently on all of those recommendations in their SWAM program. She also mentioned to me that um, previously, they haven't had a, a, a good grasp on um, how they tracked their spend. She said that, you know, they went to Oracle in 2020, which is the same system that we just went to here in 2023. And so she advised me that uh, the disparity, I think it was like ten percent from when they started tracking to now. And she said she felt like a lot of that had to do with the fact that they didn't have good reporting processes. So I went back and looked at their disparity study and just looked at the last year that might, might have been affected by these. And she said um, that seemed reasonable. And there was about a two percent increase, which she said is probably from the refining um, tracking and um, implementing the recommendations. So we have fair and open processes that allow participation by everyone. The spend data that um, I represented is, represented in the previous slides is what these processes render. State law requires that we award bids to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder and RFPs to the highest-ranked offerer. We cannot legally do anything else. Our current SWAM participation um, is twenty-four percent. However, it is comprised primarily of small business and woman-owned and not minority business or service-disabled businesses. VB CPS is working towards improving our SWAM identification and reporting. So our fiscal year reporting percentage of minority spend hopefully should increase. VB CPS recommends participating in the upcoming city disparity study with our goals of uncovering SWAM participation blind spots and to develop opportunities to increase SWAM and identification and reporting. Any questions?
Ms. Melnick and then Ms. Brown.
Oh, what does it mean to unbundle large contracts?
So when you unbundle, like you might have a contractor that's going to take care of all of the um, the painting and the, and the roofing and the drywall. And by unbundling it, you're taking the smaller pieces and portioning those out to smaller business. So it requires a lot more um, uh, oversight to do that. So there's more uh, more cost associated with actually breaking those down rather than having one contractor do the whole contract.
So by you saying the one contractor doing it all, would, does that eliminate the bid? I mean, because that bid process happens through subcontractors submitting prices. And so otherwise, I, I mean, I know a contractor comes up with a price, then they put things out for bid. Would that would eliminate the contractors, um, say in who is awarded the subcontractor work?
Right.
And so.
So we would be doing, so the, so the procurement would actually be going out and getting the subcontracts and coordinating that as opposed to a subcontractor doing that over top. And so it, it, it tends to be more costly because you're, you know, and it tends to be more difficult to um, manage.
Well, I would think it would be very difficult to manage. It might help with um, retainage and subcontractors getting the retainage that they're supposed to get back. But I, I don't know how a contractor would come up with a total price if all of that subcontract were, was eliminated.
Well, they couldn't.
Right.
So what would, it would be almost like we would be managing it as opposed to a contractor managing it.
Oh, my.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, there could be some things that you pull out. It kind of is like the same idea as when we do general contractors and um, you know, if, I'm trying to think. So I'm thinking like old donation school. So I had bid out all the furniture for that. And what I did, when I bid that out, I did to the, you know, the lowest bidder and I had ten different manufacturer suppliers. And when it, and that was all great because we saved a bunch of money. But then on the backside, when we had to manage that, it was a whole different ballgame. And so, you know. It's the initial installation of the items was difficult to manage. Well, what's become even harder is um, as maintenance comes up. And I'm having to get people to submit to warranties and that type of thing and trying to chase all these people down. And you get one person that does that really well and then you get these other five that don't. And so then we're like, why do we?
So I would imagine we would need to add a staff of project managers who, not only just manage the projects, but then have to follow up with punch lists and all the other things. So.
It would definitely increase staff to do that. And I, and I don't know, as far as um, with Livia, we just talked to her briefly, but those um, four people that I mentioned, I don't know how much they are involved. But I would imagine that, I mean, I'm thinking that if, if that department was under me, it would be more fluid and there would be, you know, SWAM and procurement kind of flowing both ways. And um, and that would probably need to be done. So we would need somebody that would have some construction background that would be able to oversee.
I don't think it'd be somebody. I think it would be some bodies.
Yeah, you're, yes.
So my other question is um, you have a chart that shows um, the diversity spend by type.
Right.
And I'm trying to understand the difference between Asian Pacific, American-owned and like what would be Asian Pacific, American-owned as opposed to Asian Pacific, American-owned small business? Like where do we use, I mean, obviously we're talking about the difference between a large business and a small business, but.
Well, it means that they've checked both boxes.
They check both boxes. Okay.
So they're not just um, minority, but they're also small.
So the number then, the percentages, you wouldn't add those two together because it's too, okay, all right, all right. Okay. I think that's it.
Okay.
Ms. Brown.
Okay, so I'm actually interested in this very slide. So I noticed that um, African-American spending is not listed. Is that just because there isn't any or it's?
Correct.
Too low to report.
No, there just isn't any.
It seems like there's some opportunity.
Originally, when I had this, when they produced this slide to me, they gave it to me in a pie chart. And you know, I, I could only see like two colors, maybe three colors. And I was like, what's going on here? And I'm like, is there any spend? I said, I'm not seeing it depicted. So finally, I said, can you give it to me in a different chart? And then we did the bar chart. So even though the, the slivers are small, you can see them represented. Whereas in the pie chart, you couldn't see them at all. They were like this line was so thin, you couldn't see it. So I wanted you to at least be able to see that it's there, but you can see that it's low.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I think what I'm hearing is we may have some struggles to um, effectively implement meaningful results from participating in the disparity study. It may be a challenge from a staffing standpoint. But um, I'm not sure that I think that, I don't think that doing the disparity study really does anything besides give us that information to decide how we proceed, correct?
Right. It would, it basically, it rendered those recommendations for them. And I think this go-around, they're going to have them assess um, how those recommendations, you know, affected their numbers as well as looking at other opportunities for them. So it's, you know, it's likely to come back with very similar, you know, type recommendations, which, you know, like I said, as the city sees, based on our current staffing, we couldn't possibly do the things that they're doing without having additional staffing.
Okay, um, so I mean, aside from the aftermath portion, right? Because we're, we're really discussing whether or not we're going to do the study. We're not discussing what we're going to do after we do the study, if we do the study. And I don't know if this is a question for you or Ms. Pay. So I, you know, I, I personally would like to see the results of the study. But um, I also recognize there's a cost to us, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would imagine that if we do partner with the city and join in this joint disparity study, there will be a cost associated with that to us. At this time, I do not know what that is.
Okay.
It's not been shared.
So I, I most specifically personally would be interested in the, the builds, like we had discussed, um, these topics. But um, I also don't want to, you know, agree to writing a blank check. So I kind of would like to get an idea of what type of cost we would be incurring and when we would be um, allocating those funds.
And certainly after this presentation discussion, if that's what the recommendation of the board would be, is to proceed, we certainly will pursue what that cost looks like and we can bring that to the board for information.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Manning.
Yes, so as you know from the previous presentation, I don't support increasing the size of staff. So that stands with this as well. And I, I have, we've had a couple of these discussions and I have asked what the cost would be and we still don't have that. So I, I just feel like I can't make any decisions without knowing the cost. I don't really even have any idea how, how much it would cost. Do we have a range of what it would cost us?
We, we, we don't, what we have is, they know what their cost is going to be. And then um, there was discussion that if we were to tack on to their study, that they would pick up some of the cost of that and we would pick up the rest of that. We can get that for you. We're not asking for action on this right now. We wanted to have this discussion at your all's request, share um, information about how we do procurement and how that impacts um, our SWAM participation. And so um, if we were to, if we were to move forward, um, the moving forward would entail us getting a cost from the city and then the board taking action on whether or not to do that.
Okay. Part of it is they want to, they want you to join another RFP committee. So they're going to draft an RFP. Now they know what they, they need to do their five-year update because disparity studies tend to, they're not considered valid after five years. So they're doing the five-year update, you are not part of the initial one. So the concern would be what are you, what part are you participating in, how much you're asking them to do? And remember, they've already done the city's stuff, so they have some of the city's information. They don't have your information because you were not part of the initial study. So that would be what we would talk through. Part of it is to ask you now, what are you interested in? Do you just want a complete disparity study on everything that you procure? Do you just want some of the suggestions that they've had here? You, you have the, you have the ability during the RFP process to figure out what portion you want and how you would pay for it. So that would be what, we were trying to get it early enough that you had the opportunity during the RFP process. If we're only interested in this, we're interested in that, that might cut down the price of it. So that's what we have to figure out from you before we can tell you what it would be.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. And this isn't a, a direct question uh, for the presenters. I'm not sure. I'm not sure if it's an admin or crystal question or just something for us as a board to be considering. What I kind of take away from this presentation is that unbundling is going to have a cost. And not unbundling is going to continue to result in not being able to include minority vendors and service people. I'm wondering if there has ever been discussion about sharing project managers with the city because I know that they have engineers and project managers and people on staff. And if instead of us putting money towards the study, we could put that money towards sharing a project manager or two or having some combined there so that we can maybe unbundle a project and start moving forward with processes that will actually get us minority-owned businesses in play rather than learning what it sounds like we kind of already know.
So I would quickly say, I wouldn't equate, rather than spending money on the study, spending money in that direction because that would be an ongoing cost and the study would be a one-time cost. So I wouldn't want to seek to kind of substitute one for the other. There are, there are always opportunities to have conversations with the city about how we work across, but there are also different procurement roles when it comes to local government and then our LEAs. So we would have to make sure we're not creating more problems than we're solving as we work through a process like that. Melissa, did you want to say something?
Yeah, and I just wanted to note, the unbundling was just one of the recommendations. So, you know, if we end up going through disparity study and saying, you know, unbundling really maybe isn't the way to go, there's eleven other recommendations in there that we can move forward with. And as part of this process, Ms. Smith and I have been looking at those and trying to see, as you've seen in our presentation, you know, what can we start doing now without the additional staff? So, thank you.
In addition, there was other information in the disparity study that we thought was intriguing. One of the reasons we pushed the recommendation to say, yes, we probably want to participate is because of that idea of uncovering our blind spots. So there are just things that popped up in their disparity study that we may not be aware of. So for example, one of the things they were able to provide was the capacity for minority contracting versus the actual participation. And that's, that's something that, you know, Carla talked a little bit about. We don't have a great handle right now. Virginia publishes a list, but that isn't necessarily localized, a great handle on local capacity for minority contracting versus what we're utilizing. And those are the kinds of pieces of information that could also be really helpful for us to say, well, is it, you know, are we under utilizing available resources or are we utilizing what's available? And I think those are the kinds of other pieces of information besides just the recommendations that might be very helpful for the division to have so that we can have a richer conversation about our own practices.
Ms. Anderson.
So, Ms. Lynetti, you indicated that we should decide if we want to be a part of even the RFP. But that kind of makes me feel like we're kind of sticking our head into it, we're jumping into it, and we don't even have a ballpark figure as to how much it's going to cost. Just a ballpark figure is all we need, so...
I'm looking, sorry, I'm looking for the email, what the initial cost on there. But the rest would be splitting the study. And then that's what the RFP does. The RFP is going to design how big and what is you're asking for. And then you send it out and then you get your contracts back. So that's why you're not in a position to know what it is. We could probably look at what the city spent last time when they did it. But again, prices are significantly different now. The RFP is to design what you're requesting them to do. And then you would go out and then get bids back. So that's why it's hard to tell you what it would be.
So the RFP wouldn't really cost anything?
Yeah, there was a, there was a set cost for it, but, and I think they were basing on what they were asking you to contribute towards it. But then because they don't know the size of what we're asking to do, they would ask you to split the cost of it. So what if you went in and you said, all right, we only want to know about construction businesses that are available to us. We don't care about the other procurement stuff, so we don't want to be a part of that study. That might reduce the amount you're participating in and there. And remember, what you want to think about is there are a lot of services that you don't, you don't contract for transportation other than a small amount with the, that you do with like your homeless transportation. You don't contract for janitorial services, so you don't really want to do that. I would strongly suggest you probably don't want to pay for somebody to look at your employment because you already have an outside contractor doing this. You don't need to look at your hiring practices on there. And you have a very specialized service types of work you do. Things like larger contracts that you, a lot of your money goes towards IT contracts. There's not a lot of negotiation you're going to be doing with Microsoft or doing something. You need those contracts, so that's not an area you really need to be looking at. So you could reduce the size based on what you're interested in doing. Or you just join in with the city and say, hey, we'd really like to know what's going on with our contracting, and you might have that ability to do that, in which case you will split the full cost with them.
Okay.
Smellnick.
I have about a hundred questions swirling through my head, so I know I don't have time for a hundred. But I'm a hundred percent behind joining in the diversity study. I, I'm really shocked to see we have no black businesses at all on our list, at all. And so I thought, I did not realize that at all. And as Ms. Lynetti pointed out, they're really only valid for about five years. And so, you know, I understand the bid process, I know how it works. This is very, this is very frustrating, like just in general. Construction in general is a very frustrating business. And so, but this isn't even close to being representative of our community. And I would like answers and how, and how we move forward. Just my opinion, but thank you.
Ms. Brown.
Okay, so I seem to recall, and I do not have it in front of me, the resolution from the city requesting us that they were going to pay for the first five hundred thousand dollars and then split it fifty percent above that. So I guess what the real question is, is where that cost is above that. Half a million dollars is probably more than I think constituents would want me to agree to spend. So I'm going to have to, you know, engage with the public a little bit on that. But I would just like to get an idea and an estimate of what it would cost to look at some of these. Again, I think, I think there's some opportunity here. Thank you.
So from an administrative perspective, in terms of direction, again, we're not asking for action. So in order for us to get you a cost, we would need to engage the city in conversation, say, we are interested in participating, here are the areas and we can work with Kami. Here, she mentioned a few areas, here are the areas that we don't think need to be studied. Here are the areas we do think need to be studied. And then we're going to work towards getting you a cost that you would then have to ultimately take action on. But we, without engaging in that conversation, we can't even, we can't ballpark anything for you. So we would need some direction to move forward in that conversation with the city. Not by action, but just in general, is that what you all want?
Now, I'm looking at the resolution, Mrs. Brown, your understanding is correct. It was the five hundred thousand. And if the school board agrees to participate in the disparity study, the city council would request a fifty-fifty cost share for amounts above the five hundred thousand dollars. I did go back and speak with the city attorney, Hannah, and said, would we be open to negotiation? They said, yes, if you'd like to come back and talk with us, they would be open to that. But they need, their concern is they need to get moving with this process. They can't wait too much. Are we going to join in or not? That's what they need to know.
Ms. Manning.
So if I could make a suggestion that administration kind of, I mean, you've already kind of reviewed. And if you can make a recommendation to the board of what areas where you think we could make improvements and a disparity study may make a difference, I agree with Ms. Lynetti. We don't want to do something we're already doing, like we don't need employment. So if I could, you know, if administration could make a recommendation to us and then engage with the city on what the cost could be?
Yeah, generally, so Ms. Smith, if you all looked at slide seven, she's talked to you a little bit about areas that we really don't have a lot of impact on. And we would want to exclude those from the study in addition to what Kami was talking about. But, you know, so there are other, there are other ones that are highlighted there, which there are, we do have a little bit more opportunity. And so those highlighted areas would be ones we may want included in the study. So if you just look at that list right there, that gives you a pretty good sense of the stuff we're not going to want, the things that aren't highlighted, we're not going to want studied. Is the best approach in terms of tonight. Now, if you want us to go back, have a broader conversation and bring it back one more time with a recommendation of anything else, we can do that as well.
Were you saying that the ones that are highlighted are what you not, you don't want?
No, those are where you do have some latitude. The non-highlighted ones are the ones where really, we, those are generally on larger contracts, national and state contracts, and we don't have the opportunity to influence procurement on those.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. So we are going to go to recess and we will meet you guys at the dais at six o'clock.